City of Lawrence Common Council, the meeting is now called to order. If everyone can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today, with all power heads, Lord, we come to you very humble in asking that you bless us with your wisdom and your guidance as we look to make decisions that are best for our community. We ask that you keep our public safety officers safe. We ask that you bless our families in this community. We also want to say a special blessing for the children of this community. Lord, we want to thank you for all those many blessings. We ask all these things in your most precious name.
Amen. Okay, so we do have a quorum. We have Counselor Denning, who is joining us via Zoom. Counselor Denning, if we do cast a vote this evening, you will need to make sure that your video is on so that your roll call vote can be counted.
Absolutely, okay.
Great. Next on the agenda is comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Do we have any?
Madam President, I have a few.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of the Davis Building Group proposed townhome development on the fort at the corner of Burts and Hawkins. Besides the size and scope of the project, the residents can't get anyone to explain why the Davis Homes projects didn't start the variance process in Lawrence. They went straight to Marion County in Indianapolis and bypassed the input from the citizens of Lawrence. The residents were disappointed by the construction and the location of the access road in the townhomes, so near to the four-way stop on Burts. They not only fear the negative impacts of this development on their quiet neighborhood, but they also set the presence in favor of the overdevelopment of the fort in now and in the future. This is in my council District III, and I did speak to a lady by the name of Sue and Mark Clark. I did send an email out to Larry Callaway, who is the principal planner number two of the City of Indianapolis Department of Metropolitan Development. And I asked him had he made a decision on the review, and he had some additional documents that he had to look through. So he couldn't give me a decision. And then number two, there is a hearing for variance to allow another, I believe it's a motor vehicle sales. And this is at 10605 Demme Drive. It's an industrial park in between Thunderbird, 59th Street, and Pendleton Pike. Public hearing will be held at the Lawrence Government Center on Tuesday, July 20, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. And also, there's another hearing, a public hearing for a liquor store at 5505 North Post Road. Right now, it's a vacant lot, and it's a little of, excuse me, of two acres. And it's right next to, across from the Social Security Office.
Thank you. Any other counselors?
Yes, Madam President, I would like to acknowledge our Lawrence Police Department for their diligent and quick response to the shooting homicide that happened, took place yesterday, July 5, in Pendleton Pike. Progress is being made, but they're acting quickly and swiftly.
Any other counselors?
Madam President?
Counselor Shavlat?
So, over the last two or three years, at the intersection of 79th and Indian Lake, if you're pulling, if you're north on Indian Lake and you're going east or west on 79th, particularly if you're going west, visibility has been very dangerous, and there's been several accidents there. And so, Mr. Henigan has attempted to try to mitigate that by mowing it, but as we all know, the weeds just keep coming back. So, he has the plan, he had a plan that they were going to go back and cut that whole hillside down so we have great visibility. And today, I was driving home, and there he was on the backhoe cleaning that out. And I've already had two texts from people that live in Chesapeake, just static that now that's a safe place to pull out because now you can see, can't see it to Kroger, but you can see pretty far down. So, just hats off to Jim and his crew. They just do a fantastic job. I can't say enough about them.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Okay, seen none. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes of regular meetings of June 7 and June 16, 2021. Is there a motion?
Make the motion. Second.
Motion, Counselor Freeman, second, Counselor Rusamorov. Any discussion? And I'm checking with you, Counselor Denning, just because you're on video, and I'm not sure if you're...
Fine.
Nothing from Counselor Denning. Okay, motion is second. Roll call vote. Counselor Denning?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counselor Rusamorov?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Shavlat?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the vouchers and payment.
Motion, Counselor Giles?
Second.
Second, Counselor Whitfield. Seen none? Roll call vote. Counselor Denning?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counselor Rusamorov?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Shavlat?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have reports of committees. Code.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a report. The cocommittee met today, and we discussed proposal number four, which is related to establishing loading and unloading zones in our city. We learned that our process to developing a loading and unloading zone had been vague, and so we've used proposal four to put some framework around it. The biggest thing that I would like to report that happened in the meeting, that I would like to report back to the committee, is in the portion of proposal four that addresses personal, I think it's section A, passenger zones, we amended the passenger zones to establish that the period of time be, I believe, 40 minutes?
20.
20 minutes, 20 minutes, instead of three minutes, in that for folks that are in passenger zones that are loading and unloading. So, we recommended the amended version to council for recommendation, for approval.
Great, thank you. Next on the agenda is unfinished business, proposal number four, 2021.
Proposal number four, 2021, introduced by Counselor Freeman, a proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, amending the Lawrence Municipal Code to amend Title III, Article II, Chapter IV regarding the establishment of loading and unloading zones on public streets.
I'd like to make a motion for approval.
You have a motion?
Accepting.
Oh, we have an amended. Motion to approve the amended version. Your motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Counselor Whitfield. Any discussion? Seen none? Seen none? Roll call vote to accept the amended version. Counselor Denning?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counselor Rusamorov?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Shavlat?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Motion to approve the amended version? Unanimous? Next, do we have a motion?
I'd like to, so, I'd like to make a motion to approve proposal number four.
So, there's a motion?
Second.
Second, Counselor Rusamorov. Any discussion? Seen none? Roll call vote. Counselor Denning?
Yes.
Counselor Wells?
Yes.
Counselor Rusamorov?
Yes.
Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
Yes.
Counselor Shavlat?
Yes.
Counselor Giles?
Yes.
Counselor Russell?
Yes.
Counselor Chavis?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have new business, resolution number 10, 2021.
Resolution number 10, 2021, introduced by Counselors Chavis and Denning, a resolution approving the Baker Tilly Municipal Advisors LLC contract for accounting services.
That will be assigned to finance. Let me, I think that, I'm going to backtrack on that, withdraw that assignment. Counselor Denning, did you want to discuss this resolution this evening? Or do you...
We can, excuse me, yeah, we can, if, or we can assign it to committee and vote on it in the mid-month.
Okay, and, and I'm just going to put this out here. The reason why is Counselor Denning and I sponsored this resolution. As you all know, we're getting ready to go into a budget, and we are seeking some advice for us in terms of the budget this year, since we no longer have Controller Fenwick, who we were all very comfortable and, you know, had a very great rapport with over the past six years that we've been working with him. And so, I know we do have a new controller, but we are putting this out here for something for the full council to look at and consider. So, I will just leave it in finance, and Counselor Denning will get that finance meeting date out ASAP because we need to sort of move on this. If the majority of the council approves it, we need to get these folks engaged as quickly as possible.
Madam President, I just wanted to note for the council members, Baker Tilly used to be Umba. If any of you have ever dealt with Umba and you don't recognize the name Baker Tilly, that's who they are. They merged with another accounting firm, and I know that Umba used to work with the city many moons ago, so just wanted to clarify.
Yeah. All right.
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I just ask a question, then? I think to the co-chair of the Finance Committee, Counselor Shavlat, would you prefer, what's your opinion? Should this go to finance, or should we discuss it tonight and get moving on this, since we are discussing the 2022 budget?
I would prefer finance. I mean, it is a financial distribution, and I think this is first I've heard of this. I knew, I saw it was on the schedule, but I think the Finance Committee meeting would provide a forum, have a good, healthy discussion about the scope, what's the timeframe, what's their billable hour rate, things of that nature.
Sounds good. I will keep it in finance.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone. So, be prepared for that probably prior to our next meeting. Next on the agenda, we have comments of the administration.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
I just wanted to give you all a quick update as far as the weekend's events. The City of Lawrence Fourth Fest was held on Sunday, July 4, and it started with a parade that we always do, and it was so well-attended, and we had so many participants that were actually in the parade. Public safety, businesses, our schools, VFW, American Legion, it was just such a patriotic day. We had, we then transitioned over to Lawrence Community Park for a car show and a fish fry. We had bands throughout the day. Literally thousands of people attended this. We had a carnival that was extremely well-attended, and then, of course, the evening concluded with a fireworks display that went, I think, over 30 minutes long, and it was wonderful. During that, everything that I just explained, we had no injuries, we had no arrests, no acts of violence, no police reports, no traffic accidents, and as you can imagine, handling that many vehicles in one place, and then everybody wants to get out of there as soon as possible. So, for there to be, I mean, it was just a positive, peaceful, community event, open to everyone, very heavy public safety presence, but not an oppressive police-type presence. We had our partners, the Lawrence Fire Department, were mobile all over the place. It was a very warm day, as you recall, and we had, we had some elderly folks there, and some of them needed assistance with the heat, and our LFD medics were just fantastic. So, I just wanted to give you that update, just a little piece of good news that I think we all really needed as we pull ourselves out of the COVID pandemic. It was, it was just a beautiful day, very, very well-planned, months in advance. There was a committee that worked on everything. So, these, these safe events are, it's not an accident, it's not a coincidence, it's the result of hard work of a lot of people, and I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that I'm just so proud of our, of our city, of our residents who can, who come together peacefully, and of course, all of our public safety personnel. So, I just wanted to give a shout-out to, really, to everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. It starts at the top, so thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have citizens' comments, and I do have three citizens signed up to speak. Please note, per council rules, at any regular session of the council, the presiding officer may allow time for comments by citizens of the City of Lawrence. Citizens' comments shall be limited to five minutes each unless extended by the presiding officer. Any person desiring to address the council must state their name and their address for the record. Citizens' comments shall be made in an orderly and civil manner. The presiding officer may, in all respects, limit comments that are repetitive, uncivil, rude, discourteous, or insulting, and I'm sure they won't be. So, I'm going to have the first citizen step forward. That would be Joe Davenport. Please step forward, state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Joe Davenport. I live at 7533 Geist Estates Drive. Little history on me, I was a volunteer fireman in the City of Lawrence for 30 years. I was a street department employee for 35 years. And I raised two, I can't say good kids, but they were kids. What I'd like to talk to you about for just a few minutes, and I got it all wrote down, we need some way of telling residents they live in Lawrence, not Indianapolis. We need to introduce new residents to our, to all of our great businesses, and, in our, great businesses in our city. I don't speak well. Where they're located, what the businesses do for them, and how can, how to contact the city offices. We have a website, but it really don't work too well. We need a card of some sort with the mayor's name, phone number, the councilman's names, their phone numbers, and all other phone numbers, such as the water company, non-business for police, non-business for the fire department. Now, this goes back to basically the old-fashioned welcome wagon. We need something like this, and the seniors would be ideal to do it, and retired people, such as myself. It would take some time, it wouldn't cost the city a dime, other than the cards with everybody's names on them, and it is something that we can tell people, you live in Lawrence, not Indianapolis. Yes, you vote for Indianapolis mayor, but you live in Lawrence. If you call the police, Indianapolis doesn't show up. If you call a fire truck, Indianapolis don't show up. We have our own fire department, police department, water utilities, street department, you name it. Another thing, we spend a lot of money on signage each year. Some of it is from damage by cars involved in wrecks. Usually, the police department, our police are called, and the officer determines who is at fault and what city property is damaged. When an officer files his report, he or she should note damage to signage or other city property. The police report should be forwarded to the street department. We, as a city, can notify their insurance company and be reimbursed. I know this is true because I did it on the street department. At one time, I was, okay, backtrack, I would contact the insurance company and send them a bill. The bill as for sign, post, replacement, and sign truck to do the work, and the bill existed of signage, no matter what sign it was, was 50 bucks, or 45 bucks. The post was $45. Labor was $50. Sign truck was $50. The insurance company would then pay the bill to our treasurer. Now, when I was doing it, the problem was that money would somehow get lost. It would always go to the general fund. We need to set that up so it goes to the street department for signage. I spent on an average of $2,000 a year on signage. I don't know what they're spending now, but it, this would really cost the city nothing, something to my heart. When the flag decorations first started, George Callahan and myself went to the businesses, neighborhoods, associations, VFW, service organizations, and residents, told them for $50, the city would put up, take care of, take down, and clean the flags. Now, other flags quickly rose in price. Now, the flags, the staffs and all that could be as much as $100. So, what I'm recommending is that we get an established person to go around to the businesses, homeowners associations, and VFW again, and get them to donate, such as the golf course, they've got, the one out at Old Oakland Golf Course, they've got five or six telephone poles there. It would cost them $500 or $600, okay? But that's a one-time shot, and we'd put them up and take them down. There's a lot of places like that that would be more than happy to do it. Now, there again, I wouldn't mind doing that myself, and I'd love to do it because I started it. Okay, here's one that everybody loves.
So, sir, you have about 60 more seconds, and I gave you a few extra minutes, but if you could wrap it up in about one more minute, that would be great.
Okay, I'll skip the holiday decorations. I put up 35,000 lights for Christmas. We have, the street department, always in Lawrence, painted in front of the fire hydrants, 12 and a half foot on either side, it's 25 feet. It's a city ordinance. And we painted back from the stop signs, 35 feet, and if I'm not mistaken, that's also part of the city ordinance. The crosswalks, the car stops, it goes down in the street, they're two and a half foot, or two foot wide, and they're not painting them. And it's about time that somebody steps up and says, and all of you are representing your citizens, so it's about time you step up and tell Jimmy, or whoever's in charge of the street department today, it's time to start painting it. Now, that is a cost, probably someplace a neighborhood of 100 gallons a year. That's all the red, the yellow painting, all the white painting. I don't know whether you've ever been at the parade, but every year, when I was there, we painted all the stop bars, all the crosswalks, and all the hydrants in, on the parade route. Now, I know it's not done today. I've seen it. So, that's all I have to say, and if anybody would like to get ahold of me and discuss the flags or anything else, the Christmas decorations, my number, home phone is 317-823-4418, and my cell number is 317-989-5061. And I would love to talk to each and every one of you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Have a good day.
You, too. Next, we have Donna Sapp. And I don't, am I pronouncing it correctly, ma'am, or is it Dona? Dona, okay.
We're just going to talk together.
That's fine. That's fine. So, is Dona going to be the only one speaking, or do you intend to speak also, ma'am? And it's okay if you do.
If it's necessary.
And what is your name?
Susan.
Okay, Susan. So, we will just, in total, you all will have 10 minutes, since there's two of you, and you both have signed up to speak, okay?
All right, great.
So, Ms. Sapp, if you could just state your name and your address for the record, please.
I'm Donna Sapp, and I live at 9101 Rising Road. We're here to talk about the Davis Building townhome development, and we've shared some of the documents that we've received from the developer, and also some of the communications that we've had back and forth with the developer, with Counselor Freeman, and so we appreciate your, your comments and your acknowledgement of the situation. Our biggest concern with the development as it was originally proposed was they're proposing 18 townhome units at the corner of Burts and Hawkins, which is a very quiet residential intersection, and our understanding is that they could be three stories high, and the entrance points that were originally proposed were on Burts Road, which is a very quiet road that doesn't have a lot of congestion. We were kind of estimating that if you had two vehicles per unit, that we'd have 36 additional vehicles coming in and out near this four-way stop, and that that would add a lot of congestion to the corner there. We're also concerned about the loss of street parking. One of the things that they're requesting from the Department of Metropolitan Development is decreasing the setbacks from the street, which is also a concern. There would be destruction of the existing drainage system along Burts Road, and there's some mature shade trees that we don't really want to see destroyed either, that, you know, could drastically change the appearance of the tree-lined street that we actually, the neighbors actually enjoy quite a bit. Because the lot is currently green space, what we would all... Because the lot is currently green space, what, we would also be experiencing loss of green space in the area. So, we were not totally opposed to the development overall. We went to the developer and asked them to make some compromises, to reduce the number of units, to change the access point so that it wasn't on Burt's near the four-way stop, and the developer had a virtual meeting with us. We were disappointed that they did not propose reducing the number of units. They, the access point would remain near the stop sign at Burt's Road, so it would not address our concern about the congestion, and the only thing that they said that they would do would be to enhance landscaping, that they had already kind of planned for the lot. And I think that's all that they, that they said that they would do, basically. So, what we're asking from you is, we're, we're just asking for support in opposing the development as planned. We did get a continuance for the DMD hearing that was supposed to be June 24th. It's now scheduled for July 29th, and we, we've got a group of neighbors that have signed a petition. We have nearly 80 signatures on a petition. We're hoping that we can continue to work with the developer up until the hearing, and maybe they might be willing to make some compromises if they could hear from some of you all. If not, then we're prepared to, to go to the hearing downtown and, and fight as hard as we can. Just, we, we just want to preserve the quiet residential atmosphere in the neighborhood. Again, we're not opposed to development in general, it's just too much in a very small, quiet corner, so.
Kevin?
Just a couple things, thank you.
So, Susan, if you can state your name and address for the record, please, thank you.
Susan Cotter, 5733 Burt's Road.
Okay.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Councilman Chairman Freeman, for just jumping on this and starting to make phone calls. That was really great. It'll be interesting to see what Larry Callaway comes back with. Big mystery is why the City of Lawrence didn't know that this was happening right within a stone's throw of this building right here. It's just kind of shameful that there seems to be some deception, and of course, we have felt that for a while between reuse authority, the City of Lawrence, and I, I think we were both surprised that then it would be the City of Indianapolis that would step in and maybe step on toes. So, we do want your help, and maybe if you can help us understand how this could happen under all our noses, that the first time we really knew about it was when those orange signs went up. Pretty much, that was it. And so, really, we are concerned if you would take a walk down there and look at the amount of space between where the cars would be coming out and where that four-way stop is, and that does get very congested when you have a lot of guests coming onto the Ford, especially in good weather. They park out there, they walk into the park. We want them to enjoy the Ford, right? We want everyone to be here. What we don't want is to make it feel like it's unattractive and crowded, and that it doesn't have that wonderful feeling it does right now. A lot of people that are ex-milliary come, I've been out working outside, I can't tell you how many times I stop, and they say, oh, my gosh, this is so wonderful over here, and it's just sort of the, part of the pride of Lawrence, and we want to be part of the pride of Lawrence and make Lawrence a better place for all citizens. Really, it's about the green space, about the traffic, and about the lack of consideration for a 1.2 size acre parcel and putting 18 townhomes on that. Anybody that needs all the information that we've shared with Counsel Freeman, we're more than happy to send it to you, and any additional information, including renderings that we made to try and help make you compromise.
Thank you. And Counselor Freeman and I, we have that information, and we will definitely make sure that the rest of the council gets it, and we appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
We're adjourned.